The city of Red Lodge is on mute.
There we go, that was the, can you hear us now?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, yeah, we just had somebody check that. So far, you've missed calling to order of the City Council meeting of April 30th and the Pledge of Allegiance. Apologies. Can we start with the roll call of officers, please?
Redwood.
Here.
Conley.
Yes.
Daniel, here. Keith, President Miller.
Here.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Stupin.
Here.
All right, can you get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
My second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Conley and a second by, who was it? Councilmember Ronnie. I just, I just didn't hear where it was, so. Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion at the table? All right, hearing none, let's do a vote.
Conley.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Stupin. Yes. All right, thank you. I think for Mayor's comments, what I would like to do is just say thank you for the council members accommodating the special meeting tonight. We actually do have a couple of things that were timely and with a three-week gap. I hate to, I hate to waste a perfectly good fifth Tuesday, but I appreciate you coming in today. With that, I will open the floor for any public comment, for any item on the agenda, but I will add a little caveat to that is, and that is, this is a public hearing, and so we will be stopping when we get to the resolution to vacate a portion of Daly Avenue. There will specifically be a public comment hearing at that time. So if you want, if your comments are in that, wait for that and I promise you it will give you an opportunity. But otherwise, we'll open the public hearing to talk about anything else that's on the agenda. Any comments online? In the room? Yes, the young lady on the front row. All right, and third time, hearing no comments, we'll go ahead and close that portion of public comments. With that, we will move to the, to the agenda. The way this will work is I will entertain a motion for the agenda. We will have some conversation at the table, then we will then open up the public hearing on the issue. And then there will be an opportunity for rebuttals on parts of the applicants, and then we'll bring it back to the table and we'll have a vote. So I will entertain a motion at this point.
It's me.
Yes.
I move to recommend approval of the petition to vacate a right-of-way for a city-owned portion of Daly Avenue, generally located adjacent Lot 4 and Lot 5 of Block 45, Red Lodge original town site, lying in Section 327, Township 7 South, Range 20 East, PMM, Harbin County, Montana, and as exhibited on Exhibit A.
Could I get you to throw in a resolution number in that just for the record?
And that is Resolution 3649.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, so motion by Councilmember Conley and second was Councilmember Daniels. I got my two hours nap today. All right, before we go to the public comment, is there any initial comment? Well, actually, let me, let me start here before we go. Does any member of, this, this is one of those things that they call quasi-judicial in nature, if you remember reading in the book, which is basically applying the law as opposed to making the laws. And so they call that quasi-judicial in nature. So does any member of the board have any ex parte communications they feel they need to disclose at this point in time?
No.
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 All right. Does any member feel that they should recuse themselves from participating in the hearing and decision on the matter before the board?
No.
No.
All right. With that, I do not see our contracted planner, who has prepared our staff report, but did anybody have any questions at the table that they had regarding the initial staff report? Right, and that staff report is part of the public record that's been out online for everybody. What I would like to do at this time is open a public hearing specific to Resolution 3649. So I'll go ahead and open that, and if you'd like to speak, if you would stand up at the table and start with your name and your residence, and then go ahead and speak. I would like, just as a reminder, that this is an opportunity for public comment and to participate in the process. It is not necessarily de facto veto, it's just your opportunity to be heard. So I'll go ahead and open the public comment at this time. Michael Gross, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Michael Gross. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step, I said you have the floor. I didn't mean to step on you when I said it.
Oh, thank you. Michael Gross, 17 Fountain Park. I was calling in in regard to the cities considering vacating their right-of-way on Daly Street. As I was reviewing the application, I, what, didn't see any reason per se that the city would be interested in vacating their right-of-way. And usually when cities do that sort of thing, they would be allowing some sort of construction or public purpose building or something that would move the city forward, and I didn't see any reasoning in that regard. When I looked at the documents too, it looked like it was right along Rock Creek, and if it allowed citizens to walk down there and access the creek, that seemed like a good thing to me. And I guess I was puzzled in that regard because in the application, there's a question that says, "Does the area to be discontinued provide access to a water body or stream?" And the application says no, but looking at the map, it looks like it does or would. So I wasn't sure as to the accuracy of that. But in any case, I just think if it's city property right-of-way and it's right on Rock Creek, that would afford a lot of opportunities for fishing, wading, launching a kayak or canoe, things that would be very beneficial to the city.
All right, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have anyone else in the room that would like to address the council at this point in time? Go ahead.
Good evening, councilors. Jacob Cody, 42 Toomey Bridge Road. I'm here as a, not a representative of every board member of the RTA, but as myself a board member of the RTA. As part of our mission is to ensure access to trails and recreational opportunities here in town. We just wanted to make sure that we were voicing that part of our mission to the city as these decisions are made. If there is any opportunity for us or any other organization in the city to use some city lands for recreational opportunities, kind of similar to Michael's comment, we would be more than excited to take advantage of such an opportunity. So just as a conversation to dedicate the property is considered, just another element to bring into the conversation there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Anyone else in the room who would like to speak at this point in time?
Michael Keyes, McGillan Avenue, Red Lodge. I kind of want to echo what he just said. We don't have a lot of places in the city limits to access Rock Creek. And being we're a recreational town and a tourist town, that looks to me like a prime spot for fishing access, kids playing in the river, kayakers put in and put out. I personally would be hesitant to lose any spots within city limits that were able to access the creek like that. Most places aren't very easily accessible to it. So those are my thoughts. Personally, I'd like to see that access, maybe even a tiny little park there, a couple picnic tables. I think it'd do the community well.
Thank you, Michael. All right, anyone else in the room?
Tom Coley, 106 Adams Avenue, South. I don't often come to these council meetings of a concern citizen, but when I see the disposal of city property on the agenda, I can, you can guarantee I'll be here. I have stood here before on numerous occasions advocating for the city to retain the property. We've seen it too many times, you know, on the path, the railroad, along the city street right-of-ways, along creeksides. We've seen the city consistently dispose of this land at a later time, regret it deeply. We could have used them for trails, public access, numerous things. And I'm just here once again to remind you all that years ago, we put forth a growth policy which clearly states that cities should not relinquish property in public right-of-ways along Rock Creek unless there is a unique and extenuating circumstance. Is the flood an extenuating circumstance? Perhaps. Did the property boundaries change? No. It's the same property boundary. It doesn't matter if it's covered with alluvium or grass or whatever. That right-of-way still exists. Doesn't matter if it's changed in nature, the surface material doesn't change the right-of-way. The pins are still there. Okay? I, I believe in the growth policy and I think you should look at that as your guiding document in your decision-making process. Couple other things. Couple years ago, the city went through an exhaustive inventory of all city-owned lands. And I believe they put down some qualities of those lands and whether or not those should be disposed or kept. And I see no reference to that inventory. There was a lot of effort put into it. It's a shame that we're not taking advantage of that research that had been done years ago. And lastly, this is, this is a piece of property that is adjacent to newly formed a city park, right? Where does the Parks Board sit on this? Have they had a chance to even input? They're in advisory board for the council. Do you not think they should have put forth some comments on the disposal of this land? I mean, if it is adjacent to a park, don't you think it might be a valuable gateway into that park or beyond?
So, I mean, the staff report is somewhat thorough, but, and it seems that it's very incomplete. The whole area has changed, granted. There's been a lot of material that has been put past, as taken out by the river. Regardless of what the surface looks like, I think you better choose wisely and perhaps even delay your decision, give it some more thought, go down there, get a re-survey, see what the pins actually are before you make this another poor decision in the city system. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? All right, let me turn, oh wait, sorry.
Melissa Griffiths, Adams Avenue, South. I'm here representing both the RTA as a board member, not the entire board, but myself, and then just as a citizen. Everything that I would say has been said, but essentially, I realize that the parcel that's being asked to be vacated is not directly a budding creekside park, but it currently provides a pathway from Ninth along the creek to Creekside Park. And so there's a big opportunity for a trail there, or as other people have referenced, just the access to land. I find it frustrating in the application that both the reference to a trail and no access is said no, and then that the water access is listed as no. And so it feels to me like those two things are just, it's not truthful as I perceive it when I'm reading the application. So I would encourage you to talk to the Parks Board, get more public input in this, think about what the right thing to do is. But as a city, as a resident of the city, I expect the city to get something in return for the things it gives away. And in vacating this, you're giving something to a resident that the rest of us can't benefit from. So I'd appreciate you considering that.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? All right, we're going to turn to folks that are online. If there's anybody online who'd like to speak publicly. I see a hand raised. Sean, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Sean Patrick Bryant, Fountain Park. I support all the comments of the other people that have spoken tonight. I would not be in favor of the city vacating this public land. And I'll leave it at that because I think the other points have been well-made by the people speaking. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone else online? All right, second call? All right, third call, final call for public comment? All right, go ahead and close the public comment. I apologize, I'm looking at a script we use in planning board and I'm kind of using it to adjust for this where this is a quasi-judicial nature. Let me just bring it, rather than me lead the discussion per se, let me bring it back to the table and see if there's anybody who wants to speak or had comment.
You're looking at me.
You look at your, um?
Well, I, we, prior to the meeting, a few of us just went down and actually assessed the area, looked through it and everything. And I, as I told the property owner, I was having a hard time recollecting what it had looked like prior to the flood and the lines, and that was, so maybe sad. But then hearing, you know, some of these constituents and their concerns, which I feel are quite valid concerns. Yeah, I, it's definitely something that I feel like we need to look into a little more.
Well, I guess my, maybe I'm not thinking correctly, but I was under the impression that the flood took away most of the land that we're talking about, if not all of the land.
That?
Do we have any stats or figures on how much land we are quote-unquote giving away?
So to that, the original letter that was put together, you may recall this came to council once before, and that had a partial map on it. So that portion of the map, at that point in time, our legal counsel advised that the river had basically vacated the right-of-way, so there really wasn't a decision to be made. The concern was that we need a paper trail. Fifty years from now, when somebody comes back and says, "What happened?", there needs to be some sort of something recorded with. And in his document, he had referenced some specific state code. I actually had reached out to MMIA several weeks ago and got a call back today, and he basically referred me to the approach that, which is what we're doing right now. So, so, two pictures, I apologize that I don't have these up there. The first one is online from several weeks ago where most of the properties are 21. That's the stuff that we were advised, that right-of-way, practically speaking, is already gone. What that did do is in essence eliminate a throughput from where the bridge formerly was down to where there's another area there. Additionally, over the time from when Daly was described, one of the surveys came back and said there's a spot there where the trail is basically a foot wide. So how much of a path goes through there? So that was part of the discussions, and the applicant's request is, rather, since we're going through this format, given that there's basically a pinch of unusable land that already exists there, just because of natural, that's 100 years, that's not necessarily from the flood, that's over time, and the fact that this end is chopped off, there's a little piece of chunk left over in the middle, which is part of what they are requesting to be vacated.
So we don't know actual size, footage?
They had, what we have is a graph that said the approximate boundary, and it has some lot numbers, but I do not see any calculations. I don't think she did in the staff report either.
I guess I'm trying to visualize how much land we're talking about because I thought the majority, if not all, was wiped out.
It was wiped out. It was rebuilt, but?
And the fact that we do not know how many square feet it is. I mean, I understand what you just said, but that still doesn't tell me how many square feet it is.
It's my understanding that Daly was pretty much wiped out from Ninth Street Bridge, south and north. And when they were rebuilding their lot and Lot 6, Lot 6 and Lot 5, they rebuilt that portion of Daly. So it's my understanding that they actually rebuilt something that doesn't, didn't exist anymore. And I know that?
The landowner?
The landowner. And I'm not sure if it was the landowner and the city, you wouldn't know whether or not the city was involved with. I heard, you know, rumors. I heard that when they did the stormwater project, they had extra dirt and fill, and that's what they used to kind of rebuild that area next to the Ninth Street Bridge that's now gone.
My understanding is some of that happened down where Lot 3 was, which is not, not part of this application.
Or Lot 6.
Well, I went down there and they were busy on Lot 6 and Lot 5.
So, right now, so if we go south, we've got the map in front of, oh!
North.
What I'm looking at is, my numbers are different, I apologize, I'm reading bad numbers. So 6, 5, and 4.
Right.
So the Daly Avenue next to 6 was completely wiped out.
Yes. As was 6.
A, next to 5 was, this is a rough number, Doug, as I'm looking at it, 90, 95% wiped out. I do not have a number for what is Lot 4 because when the city attorney basically put forth the paperwork that says it's already abandoned, just sign this letter and acknowledge that the city has no need. My concern is, I felt hesitant in doing that without having a public hearing, and I didn't see the clear path from Montana Code that was there. This is, this is a process that we have gone through before. We did have a staff report, you guys have all seen that. And I, she didn't go into that detail, but what she did say after reviewing the attorney's and also and her own study was just that the staff determined this to be an extenuating circumstance. It starts on, just for those in public who haven't seen it, "The city should not relinquish property in public right-of-ways along Rock Creek unless there is a unique and extenuating circumstance." So that's what's in line with what it says in our growth policy, probably where she pulled that from. "Staff determines this to be an extenuating circumstance due to substantial erosion of the specific portion of Daly Avenue's along Rock Creek." "It would also be prudent to note that the general area of the subject land is located within or adjacent to mapped regulated flood areas," some mumbo jumbo references. "Therefore, any subsequent development in the general area within the vacant, vacated right-of-way should review with compliance." So basically, just advising about any development that there needs to take into account that they are in the flood plain. So the answer is, 3 was 100% of Daly was gone, which basically means that at that point, there is no longer a throughput connecting two different sections along the creek. I'm sorry, 6. Where am I, keep seeing 3 that I'm reading? That says Lot 3 on that one.
Lot 6, which is right there on, what is it, Ninth Street.
Yeah, which is where the bridge was. So at that point, that being gone, plus the bottom half of 5, eliminated the fact that that's a throughput. Our legal advice is that that trail no longer exists. There is a portion of the trail that is reachable from the south, but it is not a through trail anymore.
So if somebody wanted to, they could build a trail? There's enough land to build a trail?
Well, from the south, they could come. There's a spot up here where even prior to the flood, there's only about a foot wide left of Daly Avenue. And then south of that, according to our attorney, there is nothing left to build a trail on that is owned by the city because it was vacated by Mother Nature. Now, the gentleman that I talked to today with MMIA said, "You still want to do this because to an extent, that right-of-way exists even if it's underwater." And so he recommended this is still a safety thing. And in fact, he did recommend that the applicant follow up with the process, which was originally identified by our attorney, which is declaring it kind of in conjunction with the stream bed and not the stream bed. So there's some recommendations he said that I would probably look at into, but he didn't, he recommended that the process we were doing was the appropriate process.
Can I?
Councilmember Keyes, please.
Well, first of all, I'm really sorry for the loss of your house, Campbell's, and I can't imagine what that must have been like to see it drop into the river. And thanks for showing us around today before the meeting. From what I understand, Lot 6 was filled in, well, first it was rip-wrapped along the river by the city, 6, 5, and 4, I think, and possibly further. And then it was filled, Lot 6 was filled in by the city. The Campbells filled in between the rip-wrapped in their lot.
The Campbells filled in between the ripraps in their lot line, Lot 4 and 5. So, does that sound accurate? Okay, thank you. That said, I am not in favor of giving city land away, ever. I, at the, you know, it's a lovely spot, and I would love to have that extension on my property too. But I can foresee, you know, just thinking of like the abandoned railroad from here to Laurel, like, had we had the foresight to think about that back in the day, we would have a nice bike path between here and Laurel. And who knows what the possibilities are on the riverfront. But I've been fortunate enough to visit a lot of towns that have rivers and have beautiful paths along the river. And once you give it up, you're never going to get it back. So, I don't support this.
So, when you say it'd be nice to have a pathway, bike way, whatever, is it, David, is it, I'm understanding that's not possible?
There is, you could do reclamation of the land.
The river's very wide and it always changes.
So, that's one thing that is worth considering, is the fact that that riprap was there to bring it back out, to maintain some of that, mostly to protect the homes. But it also does extend it back out towards the river, creating that space.
So, you're saying we could build where the water is?
I would think so, but I would want to talk to Dennison first, because it would come down to state law. And it would come down to codes. Like, I think that we need to have a better conversation with our attorney, even though this is his recommendation, I would like to explore other options. And just mostly, so we don't lose something that we could potentially restore. And it's nothing against you guys, again, but I would like to consider, though, because again, you have buildings that you want to be putting in, is part of the reason for this due to the setbacks? Okay, so if that was something that the city could essentially make an exemption for the setbacks, where they could go all the way through the lot line, and then we could still maintain a trail access, then to me, like, that helps them and provides a solution for them, to where they can continue with their construction, while we can still maintain some access down to that little shore.
That sounds like we need to revisit.
I would just like to talk to Dennison, that's, I think that they want...
And I apologize for not having him here. So, I wanted to kind of comment on two things. You said reclamation, yes, land can be reclaimed, and in essence, some of that reclamation is already here. The question is, does the right-of-way still remain, meaning that once it's reclaimed, it's city property? Or, as Dennison advised, the right-of-way on at least portions of it no longer exists once it's taken out? So, in other words, we're not, according to our city attorney, we are not actually abandoning this right-of-way, because we no longer have it to abandon. But the north part of it does, I'm sorry, Councilmember Keys?
If we, if we don't have anything to abandon, then how can it be built on?
That's the distinction between reclamation and a right-of-way. So, it's the right-of-way that was abandoned by the flood, per Dennison.
Yeah, I would just like some clarification from Dennison on that. I don't have that letter.
We do, it's actually in a previous passage.
For Tom's point, I mean, just because something's underwater doesn't mean you still don't have the land.
Yep.
Right, and that was, that was one of the opinions that I heard today, is the second opinion as well.
And the creek does change.
But when does the right-of-way go away?
It's city, it's city land.
So, that's really what our discussion is. The city attorney said, "The right-of-way went away when that bank disappeared."
Right.
And the code is specifically the avulsion of lots of big syllable words in there, sudden change in river or stream, that talks about, "If an avulsion occurs on a segment of a river or stream, this is Montana Code, that has not been adjudicated as navigable for title purposes by a court of competence, an owner may seek to clarify title of the property affected by the avulsion." And so, I think that was his comment, that what they needed to do was ask for it, and it was theirs, the right-of-way had de facto been abandoned. But that also did not cover the entire end of it. But I think part of the thinking is, and I'm not seeing Cody on there, so I'm left kind of speaking for her in her absence on her staff report, it had to do with, is there a through road, a through right-of-way? Or is there a dead-end right-of-way? And if the dead-end right-of-way is here, or here, or here, what is the impact? If it's not a through, how much of that? And there's a spot south of this, where the natural erosion is already down narrow enough that it's not practical to build a trail through there. I don't know, did you guys make it down, did you get a chance to see that?
Yeah, and I agree that it's like plain dirt, but, you know, you could, there could be a, who knows, a bridge that, a walking, a pedestrian bridge, and then built on the other side. I mean, I've seen it in many other towns where you're crossing the river, and, you know, a linear park. I just would hate to take that away, that possibility.
Councilmember Conley.
Okay, Daley is already gone at the end of 10th Street. So, between 10th and 9th, Daley is, Daley is gone right there at 10th Street, and I think that that was actually abandoned by the city, that dead-end.
Is that the one that had the shed on it when I was on planning board?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Daley doesn't actually run all the way along the creek, it used to, yes. So, it's rather a dead-end to the south, and we know to the north, there's only a one-foot path left. The other option might be to see if we could get a 10-foot easement. In other words, go ahead and vacate Daley, but get a 10-foot easement from them for that. But again, that only gives us...
Which meets your concern of meeting the right-of-way? Because I don't know that meeting the right-of-way is really valid. That's one of those things that's, you know...
But we still have the issue, when it gets down to Lot 3 and 4, that it's only a foot wide. So, you know, I guess if the trails people wanted to go ahead and get some riprap and rebuild that, they could. But what if we just asked the Campbells for a 10-foot easement? This was Pete Crutelli's suggestion. You know, and the other thing, as far as putting a canoe in the river, you've got Ninth Street right where the bridge is, you just put it in there. So, I don't agree with access to the creek, because it's obvious access to the creek. But the trail is a different story, so maybe a 10-foot easement. In other words, go ahead and vacate Daley, and keep in mind that Lot 6, the bottom one, the one that's on 9th, still has Daley Avenue. They haven't asked us to vacate it, so it's kind of only in the middle. But if we had a 10-foot easement along the creek, we could go ahead and vacate that portion of Daley and still have a right, still have a way through. And I agree, I mean, I understand that they lost a lot of land and a house with the flood. And I think that's pretty extraordinary, and we should, you know, consider that as well when we're doing this. But a 10-foot easement might be the way to go.
My understanding is that 6, that the portion of Daley Avenue that was adjacent to 6 was completely gone.
Oh, it was, yeah.
And so, again, if we go with the legal guidance of, it's gone, there's just not a paper trail to show it, that impacts, like I said, that impacts all of the stuff next to 6, and why it's labeled Lot 3 on this and 6 on this, I don't know.
I don't know where you get that.
There's two, yeah.
Have you guys gone down there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In a moment, I'm going to ask the applicants, I probably should have asked the applicants kind of early on right after the initial public hearing, but I'm hoping they can help us with some of the questions. I want to allow the council to ask questions directly. Do you mind coming up to the, and stating your name? We'll put you on the hot spot for just a minute.
My name's Nick Campbell. Thank you guys for inviting us to visit. My wife and I is here as well. We appreciate the time the city council's put in on this matter. Been very difficult, two years, obviously, I'm not going to dwell on the past. I, all we were trying to do in the initial discussion on this was to establish where the boundaries were where we were. And we understand that when the water came through and washed out all of that property, and we put it back in place, Lot 5 is completely ours, it goes all the way up to the creek, according to state law. So, the bottom line on it was, we were just trying to move our house just a little bit farther on our property, not into that area, but just to allow the setback, we're setting into the setback a little bit. We're not moving it out towards the creek anymore, we're just trying to move it onto that property and get a little bit more centered approach to our house that we're trying to rebuild up here. So, the Lot, Lot 4, which is also ours, that piece did not erode out, and Doug, I just wanted to clarify that, that did not erode out, but 5 was completely gone, and we paid to have that all put back. We had to put our property back in, obviously, and we had to put in not only that piece, but then the piece to the west, which went out towards Cooper Avenue, we had to fill that back in. Then we paid additional to fill out to the riprap that was existing, so that our piece one just caved in on either side. And we were told by KLE that had to be done, otherwise we're just filling in a hole that was just going to keep eroding. So, in essence, we filled in two pieces on either side of ours. Clarification on anything specific?
I had a question. Were you able to find the rebar between Lot 3 and Lot 4 on Daley?
No, the sewer washed all of it out. However, we did do a survey on that with Red Lodge Surveying, which is...
Between 3 and 4? Between 3 and 4?
Yeah, it depends on 3 and 4.
Oh, yeah, 3 and 4, yeah.
Yeah, no, 3 and 4, I saw something in here that said, "Found, found the cap."
Yeah.
So, you found the cap there. But obviously, then the cap between your Lot 4 and 5 was gone.
Correct.
So, you're already on the creek now?
Yeah.
The problem are the setbacks.
Right.
Exactly. If the state law, as Dennison has indicated, is valid, which it looks like, all of the annotations look good, I mean, that property is legally ours out to the creek. So, if you want access to 4, you're going to have to go all the way down to Creekside Park and then come up from that way, and that's where you run into that thin piece that, that one foot piece that's sitting out there. And then your land lot, in behind us there.
Creekside Park is large.
Trees are a little thick in that area, and you'd have to cut some down, which might pose an issue for riparian issues on creek side, cutting trees down is a big concern.
That's a concern.
Then you run the risk of more erosion in that area.
Which didn't erode this time, so maybe because of the trees.
Yeah, trees.
I apologize, I thought I had a letter of that summary that Dennison had provided to you, that he also provided to us a month ago. Was councils reading between the lines or assessment of the setbacks being the accurate concern? It's not that you're, not that you're trying to build right down to the creek, but my understanding, in speaking with the city planner, is that there's a corner that basically had to be a triangle lopped off, rather than being a corner because of the setbacks, if the lot lines were where they were pre-flood.
Correct.
And so, the question is, we have the recommendation from our legal telling us that those lot lines, at least adjacent to Lot 21, I'm sorry. Well, that's, how come it says Lot 3 and then it says 20?
I see that, yeah.
Yeah, I see, it does, yeah.
Now I see where you're seeing that.
I keep seeing Lot 3 when I look down there, but on 21 and 22, we've already been told on 21, which is actually the lot that's causing the problem, that it's been vacated. That the boundary isn't the same.
Lot 5.
Lot 5.
Where does it say 5 on that chart? Why am I just...
It doesn't, it has Lot 4 and 5, and then it has an outline of their garage and the house as it was. Actually, this is from the surveyor's worksheet dated July 25, 2022. It shows Lots 4 and 5, Block 45, and an outline, which I'm assuming on Lot 4, which was the garage. And then the house was more like on Lot 6, Lot 5. Are you planning on building in the same footprint?
No.
It's going to be a little bit different there.
So, it's not going to connect the way it did to the garage as in the past? And so, the way the new one is, it's going to be more at an angle, so that that was where the corner issue came up?
The actual portion that would interfere, get into that, that right-of-way, is actually patio. It's not the house, it's just the patio, it's a piece of the patio that would stick into that right-of-way by a foot.
Wow.
So, it's not...
On Lot 5.
On Lot 5.
On Lot 5.
I do remember that the, we did get the recommendation from the city attorney.
Yeah, and I have that electronically, so this was sent out in packet wise, this would have been back in the... Six weeks ago, because it was kind of where we started down this, and my concern was, does it show? I don't see the date in here. So, he goes through and describes it, and what he offered at that time was a declaration signed by the mayor. And again, I didn't feel comfortable signing a declaration without permission of council. But at that point, he goes through and he provides the legal description of it, and he said, "And Rock Creek was fully eroded away due to flood, the flood event that happened in June of 2022, as more fully set forth on the exhibit attached A," which is where I keep reading the 3 from, because it's very prominent on that copy. "Riparian landowners lose land through natural process of erosion and gate land through aggression." I'm going to look through people in the, and then he goes through and cites several court cases, Harding, Savoy. "Erosion removes all remnants of the former land form, whereas aggression results in a completely new land form. Title to real property does not change if the parcel remains identifiable before and after an event. Furthermore, if remnants of the old land form are distinct and identifiable before and after the event occurs, title remains with the property owner. However, if the land is removed by erosion event, the landowner loses title to the right to this said land, and the cases he refers to, I believe he's referring to the city in that standpoint, that the city right-of-way is lost to that. As such, I hereby determine and declare, this is the declaration that he recommended, that due to the flooding event that happened in June of 2022, the city of Red Lodge hereby disclaims any right, title, and/or ownership of that portion of Daley Avenue located between Lot 5 of Block 45, Red Lodge, original town site, blah, 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 blah." So, that was, and he lists a couple of different specific codes. He mentioned 70, 18, 206. Today, as I was talking to the other gentleman, he mentioned 714, 4114, which says a procedure to discontinue streets, which is, in essence, the process that we're following. So, it does not take into account erosion or non-erosion. So, we're kind of dealing with two separate issues. We're using the process that we would normally use to abandon any city right-of-way, where we evaluate, what is the city losing? Are we losing something that, A, we had to lose, or B, that there has value for? And then the second part is, we're using that mechanism to document a process where we've been told it's been evacuated by the river.
Which packet was that in? I've been going through packets for the last 20 minutes, trying to find it.
The date, it would have been in... Um, I'm finding it because I forwarded it on to the attorney and, and Helena. My recollection is like six to eight weeks ago.
Because it had to be in the paper in April twice, it was in...
Yeah, because the follow-up was, we published it twice, which is another one of those things that I...
It was the last meeting in March, maybe?
A did, not in there.
Little meeting?
Yeah, it was all of March.
What I'm wondering is if we didn't include that in the packet, because I just didn't feel comfortable moving forward with it, so it may not have been included in the packet.
I, yeah, I don't remember ever reading this, so...
I don't remember reading it.
But, was it because you were part of landing, because you were part of landing and planning all?
No.
No?
No, we don't have anything. Because I don't think that we...
All right, are there any questions for the applicant while I've got them standing?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, guys.
So, would that be something that you guys might be interested in, would be an easement situation?
Possibly. I, I'd like to review it, because...
Oh, of course.
Possibly, yeah.
Okay.
We're, we're, basically, we're trying to do this right. We're not trying to circumvent anything, and we've been at this for four or five months, trying to get the right process through to complete construction on a property that's going to add more tax base to the, to Red Lodge. And, and we've been here for nineteen years before the flood. I mean, we owned our house, we built our house. Blood, sweat, and tears, we put it all together with family and friends and everything, and all we're trying to do is, is we have a different design, we just want to move the house a little bit farther onto the property, and, um, and since that piece was legally vacated because of the flood, and we paid to put it back in, we're just asking for some ability to do that.
And I apologize that, that, that there's been fuzzy guidance and direction appearance, and I, and I will take a, a, a significant role in that, because like I said, uh, when this was initially, when the, when the city attorney, um, first met, and, and so, I went down and, and, uh, and met and, and the city attorney, and basically just referred to the city attorney, and the city attorney did a follow-up meeting and came back and said, "It's done by Mother Nature, you don't really have anything you need to do." And I said, "Well, what are they going to record?" And he said, "I'll write you a letter that you can go record, that'll be on the title." Um, and as I looked at that, I had, I mean, the fact of the matter is, you can record a lunch menu if it's signed and notarized. Um, the question is, does it have the, the legal bearing? Does it have meaning fifty years from now when somebody goes by and, and looks at that? And, and to me, my fifty-year-old-from-now self looked back and said, "What, what are they thinking?" And at that point, I decided it was, that, that, that process that he defined in there is actually a very, very lengthy process of going to the state and they acknowledge it, and then goes back and forth and back and forth, and I didn't think it would meet the, the needs of trying to build this year. And so, we said, "We, we started down the wrong path, let's, let's do the traditional path, which is where we're on right now." Doesn't mean that that legal option or that input went away, it just meant that path had too many fuzzies in it, for my mind. Oh.
And now that land use.
Yeah.
Well, I think we can all agree that we want the Campbells to be able to build their house.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, make themselves whole again. Um, and, you know, I look back at the, what we did with the Yellowstone Wildlife Center and how we cooperatively each got what we needed, and I feel like this is a similar situation, and, um, you know, hopefully they, you guys would be amenable to, um, allowing the city to, um, someday maybe have a trail there, I don't know how that would work.
We're certainly not against a trail, that may have come across the way, we're not against it.
Oh, sure, because I understand your neighbors are the next in line after, you know, the lot, lot three and two, a similar situation, so...
If, if you look at the amount of Daly that's been abandoned up the way, your trail is going to be half a block long here, a block long there, half a block long here.
And then, I mean, Tom can, Tom can test, that's how trails start, you've got to start somewhere, you're not going to have just a, a long stretch.
But, we're not, we're not against it by any means, that's not the point of the whole discussion here, we're just trying to find a legal means to put our house together this year.
Yep, yep.
Our window's basically closing on us, and we're trying to do this, and I'm not trying to hurry your decision along, but it is the fact that we've lined up contractors and things for the summer, um, I'm going to have to unravel a lot of that if we can't come to some agreement.
I'm looking at Onyx Hunt, and it looks like from, um, Eighth Street South is very heavily treed, so there is no trail through there now.
No, there isn't, okay.
Um, and Daly has been abandoned between, you know, Tenth and Eleventh, and it's not a through fair, it's not, you know, and it doesn't, it doesn't stop anybody from getting to the river, because Ninth Street now stops right there at the river, so, or creek. So, as far as recreational, I don't see a problem. I also noticed that Daly on the other side of Ninth Street appears to be quite wide, or it did. I don't know whether, what it looks like now, because Onyx Hunt doesn't, you know, update it as quickly as it should. I just don't have any problem with abandoning that portion, because it really doesn't go anywhere. And it doesn't really prohibit.
Councilmember Tupin, did you have...
Recreation. Oh, I just see someone holding their hand up, and I, I, but then I remember we have protocol, I guess, but, sorry.
I'm, I'm, did you, did you want to speak? I'm, I'm...
No, I want him to speak.
Oh, out, out in, in the public?
Yeah, but I know it's not a...
Right now, I'm keeping conversation at the table for, for the time being.
Can I ask you, what, what is the difference, um, legal difference between, uh, city right-of-way and city-owned land?
Uh-oh.
I'm trying to think, because, is, um, my understanding is a, well, because we have several right-of-ways all throughout town, like, so for most of us, one of the things that's...
I mean, I know the difference between an easement and a right-of-way, because a right-of-way you can build a street on or a sidewalk on, but an easement is like for more for utilities and things like that, that would probably go underground and then person can still have access to their land.
Yeah, essentially, it's shared access.
It's also travel, you can travel on an easement.
So, is, is it, the question is kind of, is, is a right-of-way just city-owned land with a stated purpose and intent?
Correct.
Oh, the answer to that.
I mean, Daly was, was a street, it was a right-of-way.
It was going to be a street.
And that's the thing, we don't necessarily need a street, but it would be nice to have a, a path, so I think that's a really good distinction.
Um, I guess my, my question is, and I understand what Dennison is saying, and I, you know, we have to put some faith in our city attorney that he hopefully knows the law, um, and if state law says this is so, and he thinks that's the opinion, then I think we don't really have much choice, but my question is, you know, they were able to rebuild their land, why couldn't the city have gone in and rebuilt our land?
And the city didn't.
And the city didn't.
So, so my understanding from Dennison is that we, we could have, and that there were places that we did, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's city land that we rebuilt at that point. So, anytime there's an abandonment of a right-of-way, it is divided and goes to the adjacent properties.
But, well, see, that's, then that's my question, then it's not a, it's not city-owned land if it's just a right-of-way, because if it's our land, we can rebuild it. If it's just a right-of-way and we don't have ownership of it, it's just a right-of-way, then it's gone. So, I don't understa, you know, that's, I guess, my question.
Well, they did build out on lot six.
Right, but if it, if it's city-owned land, then we still own it. If a right-of-way is on someone else's land that we're just going to basically build a, a road on, and we lose that right-of-way when it's gone, and then they did, I, I guess I'm just very confused on how that works. I want to make sure we're right.
Councilmember Conley. When a right-of-way is abandoned, half goes to the pro, adjacent property owners, correct?
Yeah, so it splits, if, if it was, if it was a right-of-way between two property owners...
Half goes to...
My understanding is that that right-of-way abandonment is half goes to that, half goes to that.
So, we're kind of bad, back to a ten-foot easement for the city, or splitting Daly so that they get half and we get half, we get half. If we abandon that right-of-way, they have the right to half of it.
Rock Creek gets the other half.
Rock Creek versus the section...
It's federal, I mean, it's a, it's a waterway, it's a state waterway.
Water is state, which is a whole nother messy category.
But, I'm just, that's why I'm going back to that ten-foot easement, which would basically splitting Daly, I don't know how wide Daly was at some point, probably thirty feet, but let's say it's twenty feet, because it's really old.
So, let me...
You see where I'm going?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing a couple of conversations. One of them is, there's a goal to maintain a trail, even if it's just a partial trail, because I don't think practically speaking, it's going to go all the way through.
It is.
Um, I'm, I'm hearing that the comfort of knowing there's an easement on that trail may or may not affect how some people feel up here about moving forward. I'm also hearing the applicant saying, "That's something we haven't thought about about this time, we'd like to think about that." I'm wondering if it would be advantageous to call a five or ten-minute recess, um, give you guys an opportunity to go out and discuss and think about it, and say, "Yeah, we're good," or "We like that," or "We want to hold off." Um, from your position, I guess, let me start by reaching to you, would there be any values to, is that still too big of a decision to make in, in ten minutes, or do you guys want to go out and talk about it?
I don't know, we're going to get there in ten minutes, but we could, we could try it.
Okay.
Any objection from the table if I call a ten-minute recess?
No.
All right, I'm going to call a ten-minute recess.
Or could we move on to the next end item?
Um...
Come back, come back, circle back to it? I know we've got an open motion, so we have to...
Oh, um, yeah. I mean, do you, if I, if, um, we had a motion to table this for, for, until the end of the agenda and then move on, that would give you guys an opportunity to go out? Procedure, or is everybody aware that I'm breaking the rules at that point, or am I following it?
You're okay.
I feel like we tried to, I feel like we tabled before and then brought back to the table, all within the same meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion to table to the end of the agenda? The current resolution?
Um, I'll move to table resolution number thirty-six forty-nine, the resolution to vacate a portion of Daly Avenue, to the end of the agenda.
I would second that.
All right, have a motion by Councilmember Daniels and a second by Councilmember Conley, and so we will go ahead and table that motion until after we do the next part, um, and, and you guys go out.
Talk amongst ourselves.
Talk amongst yourselves, thank you. Thank you.
I'll take a roll call though on that table.
Oh, yeah, can I get a, can I get a vote on the motion to table?
Um, yeah. Daniel?
Yeah.
Eve?
Yes.
Miller?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, thank you for keeping me in check. All right, um, I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
I would move to authorize the mayor to sign the contract for planning services with WWC Engineering.
I'll second.
All right, there is a motion on the table and it's been seconded, I'll go ahead and introduce this. Um, so this was a contract, um, it does say draft on it, however, we have the, we did receive a response back from them that they are okay with the changes, so the, the red lines are actually blue in this, so there were some areas that were struck, and there was some additions that were made in Article Ten, um, but, uh, and they changed this from Wyoming to Montana, and we gave them a bad time about, that's an embarrassing error to have in their folks, um, but, um, any comments or questions on that agreement or thoughts? Councilmember Conley.
Shall I assume that our city attorney has approved this?
He has, and that is where the, the red lines came from. We, we anticipated that, that, that that question would come up, and so, yes, he has.
That's all I wanted to know.
Other questions from the table?
And you had said last time you got, you had three bids?
We had three applicants for that, yes.
And then attorney, it's really hard to say if this is better, good.
This is one that I felt was a, a good fit, given...
He said, "Okay, I'm okay."
Kind of, there's this much statutorily, and then there's change the world, and budgetary-wise, and where we are processed, this was one that felt like it fit that condition.
I have no comment. Sure, no, no comment.
Um, I just had a, a quick question, this is primarily just to verify it's, it's for planning?
This is for the planning-related services, so for instance, if there's a conditional use or a right-of-way abandonment, so this was something that was done by our current planner, the other issue that we have in front of us.
Correct.
The staff report that was prepared, the research that was done for the legality of it, um, that's...
Just wanted to verify that, I was sure that was what it was.
That's, that's what, that's what they're doing, and it's basically on, on needed, uh, and on demand as needed. Um, one of the things that we did not, that we noted that was not here, the, the last contract we had had a hard feeling of it, about it will not exceed a certain point, um, this one did not, so basically that puts it upon mayor and staff to make sure that we are managing our expenses and not spending more than what is budgeted, which is true of everything.
And, um, in the course of their planning, do, will they also be writing grants for us?
They have that option as needed.
Okay.
By the way, one of the options is, we are allowed to utilize actually any of the three, so, so the way that the bid was written and the way the contracts are there, um, we can parse it out and utilize, so if there's something we feel that somebody else is better for, that does remain an option for us.
What's that?
Oh.
Open relationship.
Councilmember Miller, comments?
Nope, all good.
All right, I just want to make sure I'm including you, you're kind of quiet over there sometimes.
I meant a few words.
He speaks when, when necessary.
That's right, thank you.
All right, hearing no further discussion, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yeah.
Eve?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Um...
Public comment?
Well, I, I, I don't want to move to public comment until, until we get done with the meeting. Um, maybe what I would like to do is, is, um, just, uh, go ahead and, and, and take a, another five minutes just for that, um, and, and I'm assuming everyone has had a chance to read through the, the staff report, um, and see that, but, um, what let's do is, let's go ahead and call a five-minute recess officially, and we'll resume at ten after. So, um, can I have a motion to pick up three six four nine from the table, please?
I make a res, or a motion to reopen the conversation, resolution number thirty-six forty-nine.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, and, uh, just in case we need a vote, all in favor, raise their hands. All right, I've got six. All right, who from the table would like to speak, please? If, um, just the nature of it, proficiency, let's revert to the more formal, raise your hands, and I'll call on you, and then we'll go around the table, so this is just, again, comments from the table. Don't everybody raise your hands at once.
Why don't you just go around the table?
Okay, I'll go around the table. Councilmember Miller?
I, I think it's, uh, I'd like to hear what, uh, the Campbells have to say, uh, you know, I think we all want to compromise if necessary to, so that we each get what we want, and I, you know, yes, we have an obligation to take in legal counsel's point of view, but there's not a mandate there that I know of, so I think we need to take every fact into consideration, if they're willing to move a little bit, you know, we'd like to accommodate them so that we don't, uh, postpone the rest of their, their year, you know, so they can move on their project. I just don't want it to get tied up in red tape, let's, you know, let's make a decision and move.
Any comment in response to that?
Um, one thing, one thing that we could consider too, and I, I also would like to hear what the Campbells have to say, but, um, and I know time is of the essence for them, for building, because it is a short season, but, um, we, there's a lot of questions and not a lot of answers, so maybe this is something we could postpone, um, for the next meeting and gather more information.
And it's certainly a motion that can be made.
And then, with that, it'd be nice to have the lawyer here.
And then with that, it'd be nice to have the lawyer here, if possible. Um, yeah, that would be, I would, any other thoughts on it?
My, my only concern is, you know, the Campbell's, like, it is, time is of the essence for them.
Yep.
Before we make a motion, let's hear what they have to say.
Okay, Campbell, do you mind coming up to the hotspot just again and letting us know if you had any brilliant epiphanies?
Well, again, we, we thank you for your attention to this matter, we definitely want to come to a resolution. However, your own city attorney has made a basic statement on this predicament that we're in. That is, when the land was eroded, Montana state law, in case you didn't read the annotation, but you can read it in the, in the book, clearly states that land is now ours. And before we would grant a, a, an easement on property we already own, we would want to confer with an attorney to make sure that we have to do that. In essence, we believe the land from lot five to the creek is legally ours right now. And, uh, and Dennison actually is one of the experts on that particular law, because he actually was involved in the study on that whole law and presented a paper to the state on it. So, um, you can certainly confer with him, but we, we've had meetings with him over the last four months, and we've talked with him about it, and he has indicated clearly that that property is legally ours. So, um, before we would grant an easement, we would need to speak with an attorney to determine that, um, why would we give up something that we already own?
And also on lot four, there's portions of Daley Avenue that aren't even ten feet wide, so we would basically be giving up more than we're asking for, and so we'd be losing property by having the easement there. And, um, you know, that's a concern for us.
And we certainly appreciate the compromising nature of the council, we thank you for it, but I think that, um, since that land is legally ours, I don't see why we would have to give up a legal easement process, but I will, we will confer with an attorney to determine that.
Thank you. I, I will confirm that in my quizzing of Dennison, um, that was one of the things that jumped out to me too, is that this was the role he said he played with the state, and it was kind of like, oh, look, we've, we've tripped across his level of expertise. Um, and, and, and I felt comfortable with that, and, uh, I will own that I did not have him here. I actually had had it, uh, on my to-do list, and I thought I need to reach out and see if Dennison is there, and I failed to do that, so we can beat me later. Um, any other comments or questions for the Campbell's?
I, I'm, the more I sit here and listen, the more confused I get. If, if they're saying that it's cut and dried, black and white, state law says it's there, who are we to say no? I mean, I, like I said, I, I, I'm like you guys, I like to have the lawyer here, but if it's as simple as that, and-
The, the difference is, is that if they go that route, it has to go through the state, and it, um, there's a big long line of paperwork that has to happen for them to actually get ownership, legal, like, written ownership of it.
Is that your understanding?
Yeah, whereas, because, uh, that's what the, the mayor said, where, and this is the quicker way of doing it if we abandon it. Like, if we sign this resolution, they walk out the door, it's there. If, if we say no, we're not going to sign this, then they have to go through the whole other route to attain ownership of it, is my understanding.
That, that's, that's a good summary of what my understanding is as well.
You guys agree with that summary?
Yeah, that's the first time I've heard that, but if that's the case, I, Dennison did mention that to us when we did this.
And that, that's, that's in the letter that I think most folks have had a chance to look at, um-
I-
Councilmember Conley?
This is Red Lodge original plot, okay? You can see the cooper, this is the lots that we're discussing, I'm sure that you've seen this, and this was all daily. If you look at what it is now, daily used to be way down here on the other side of Rock Creek, okay? It's my, my opinion that daily is going to continue to erode as it has over the years, and I just don't have any problem with abandoning something that will never be a thoroughfare. And a one-foot wide trail, when we get to this lot, I don't want people walking on a one-foot trail where the river drops off and there are trees on it, so they're going to have to try to, it doesn't make any sense to me. So I am leaning towards abandoning daily, at least at that point, especially since they've actually paid to put it back, and you can see how much it has eroded in the hundred years. It's going to continue to erode, as we just saw.
Which direction?
It, it's been eroding to the east.
What happens when the river channel moves the other way? Who owns the land then?
If the river moves the other way?
Yeah, what about the flood of 2052? That may happen, and the whole river channel changes again.
Not my monkey.
That's exactly what previous council member said, the river was-
That's it, if, if that's going to happen.
If the dynamic system changes-
Happens.
You can't make your decision on the here and now, you own the land underneath, if it moves that the other way, the abolition laws still apply.
The, the understanding I have from Dennison, nobody owns the land underneath, we own that property, you can't build a tunnel under what we already currently own.
But it could erode back the other way.
Okay, let me, let me, let me bring it back to the tunnel. I, I did, I did have a question that I'd like to, in, in the comments, and, and Tom, and I, I don't believe this was you who made the comment, but I think you would be able to speak to it. Somebody had talked about, um, this particular portion being adjacent to a park, um-
I, I brought that up, just the idea that, uh, down that, that narrow one-foot section where the pier is and you wrap around to Creekside Park.
Okay, the nor- that's north?
The north.
Okay.
And I, I, I understand it's narrow there, but as we, as a community, going back to Chris's comment about, you know, pathways, people flock to places, they buy houses along pathways, they want to be on the river, these guys want to build their home on the river because it's a beautiful place. And so we're connecting a small, potential small pathway to another small pathway, and incrementally, that's how we make things happen, that was my comment.
Thank you. But you were, you were referring, and that was my suspicion, but I just wanted to confirm and make sure that there wasn't a, another park that I had, had missed there.
And, and I would like to go back to my-
I'm going to bring it back to the table.
Okay, I would like to, I mean, bring it back to my original question, I mean, if, if we own that land, we, I don't understand why we would lose it. If, if we lost it to anything, it would be to the creek, to the state of Montana.
It reverts to the, excuse me, it reverts to the adjacent landowner, in the law, you'll see that-
Right, but, and I guess that's where, my question is, right, but what's the, but, well, we, we still own the land on, on this side.
It's a right of way, it's not-
But that's what I'm, that's my question, what's the difference between owning the land versus a right of way? I mean, do we own it or not?
Tom, do you by chance know the distinction in your level of expertise?
No, you don't.
What's the difference between a right of way and, and land ownership?
It's my belief that the city owns the land, whether it's a right of way or it's a city park, it's just that the right of way has been designated as a route of travel, whether it be for motor vehicle or non-motor vehicle.
It's additional layer designation on top of city land.
Yeah, but you still own it, city-owned land. And I, I, you know, this is a very difficult, I, I get it, but it, bottom line is, I think, you know, the abolition laws do apply, like your attorney suggested, you know, if, if the river channel moves in one direction, someone's going to lose land, and someone's going to gain land. My point is that if it changes again, which it is likely to do, who then owns the land if it recedes back the other way? You've lost that land if you've abandoned it, and I mean, it's gone forever. I, I think, I think the Campbell's can do what they want to do through other means. You know, I'd like to see where their, their proposed footprint of this building relates to their existing footprint, and see if we can accommodate their needs and their move to build for, with variances. It seems like a simple, um, planning tool that you guys can maybe leverage in this situation.
But if the state law that states that Daley Avenue eroded into the creek in a snowwater, Daley Avenue, then, and that the ownership belongs to the adjacent owner, which is us, then it doesn't exist.
And I guess that's, and I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and bring things, I'm going to bring things back to the council.
Back, because I think there's a confusion that's being, the, the creek did move, okay, it eroded, it completely took land away, it did not, then that land was put back, so it's not a case where the creek moved and has eaten up some daily and then at some point moves back, the land was completely gone, it was erased. And that's where the attorney, Dennison, is saying, when that happened, the right of way for daily was lost. They put it back, so that's why, they put back the land that was there, and, and so it's not the creek moved, because the creek is pretty close to where it was before. It's just simply that that land disappeared, which took the right of way away, which, so you're not really abandoning city-owned land, you're abandoning a right of way that, the road, because typically you own, landowners own to the center of roads, and there's a right of way over there to put utilities and put, and travel and all of that. That's the discussion, that, there's a, there's a number of things flying around here of, of, well, is it underwater? It's not underwater, it's, it's above ground, but that's only because they put the ground back, and that's where the state law comes into play. So if, if the city council chooses not to go this route, that's fine, because the, the state will come along and it will take them longer, but the same end will, will end up, the same conclusion will, will happen, it's, it's just whether it takes longer or shorter, but it's-
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, so, so, so bringing back to the table, and, and I think, again, what we've got is we've got a, we've got a complicated issue. Um, quite frankly, in my head, I'm keeping track of three different mechanisms going forward. We've got the letter, we've got the, the right of way, um, which seemed like, let me rephrase, it's the one that we had the most direct control over, and so that's the one that I put on the agenda and went with. Um, and then there's ultimately an option of, you know, does this, um, and, and, and this is out of our control, this would be the landowners, is this something that goes to, uh, to, uh, to a legal ruling to have that happen? Um, and I'm going to go out on a limb and guess, nobody prefers that route for, for lots of different reasons. Um, at this point, um, let me do just a quick go-around of the table and see if there's any last comment, um, that anybody would like to add that they feel hasn't been said yet. Um, and, and as for not, um, I'll, either someone can make a motion to table it, or we'll, we'll continue with the motion that's on and, and take a vote and go from there. So I'm just going to go quickly around, Councilman-
Well, I, I wish it was easy to say, uh, where I'm, I'm torn and, and split is what I hear is that the state of Montana says one thing, and our lawyer representing Red Lodge says another thing. Who am I to, listen, who am I, I need further investigation, I mean, I need-
They're saying the same thing, they're saying the same thing, because Dennison is reiterating what Montana law states, and that's where this came into play, if he just, he just told us what Montana law was, and that's what he's telling us.
The difference is there's separate avenues of how they can obtain.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and thank, thank you, Councilmember Miller, Councilmember Keys.
Uh, I don't really have anything further to add.
Thank you, Councilmember Toobin.
I just have one question, um, what is your timeline for starting construction?
I don't have an exact timeline, but it's slowly closing, as you know, there's a short building.
Oh, for sure, I was just wondering, do you have a contractor scheduled to come?
Sometime in May.
Okay.
I think you just had a contractor coming in the tenth of May.
Okay.
Councilmember Ronnie?
Um, no, no further comment.
Councilmember Conley?
We didn't, it was brought up that we could get a variance, the problem that they're having is the footprint actually goes into, into daily, and I'm wondering if we can do some sort of a, a variance on the setback, which would solve the immediate problem.
So, so to clarify, the footprint, so my understanding does not, and this is coming through, through Brian, our, our city planner, the footprint does not extend into daily, but nor does it leave a sufficient setback unless you include daily in that?
Exactly, so if you did a, a variance on the setback due to hardship, which is the only way you get a variance, then that would solve everything at this point.
Are, are, and, and as a member of the planning board who's been there before, is that, is that the mechanism that we'd go for with that?
It would be planning board, it would be a variance on the setback due to hardship, and I can't speak for the other six members, but this does sound like a hardship to me.
Thank you. Councilmember, uh, dang it, Daniel?
Wow.
I was so close.
Yeah, no, I don't really have any, anything else that-
All right. One last big pregnant pause, if anybody else would like to make a motion.
Would we motion?
Two.
Can we make a motion if we already have a motion?
You, you can move and continue.
Okay, um, I would move to table this.
To a date certain?
Uh, to our next meeting, fourteenth.
Which would be-
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth? There is a motion to table to May fourteenth? Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second, is there any discussion?
I would just like some of our questions answered that we've raised.
The mayor, bring the city attorney and the city planner to speak to answers.
Mm-hmm, please.
Please accept my apologies for not having the foresight to do that tonight.
Specifically, I, I would really like to know if, if we owned that land, or if, as this gentleman said, it was actually owned by the property owners and we just had a right of way over their land, because that makes a huge difference. Did we actually own Daley Avenue, or was it just a right of way over a landowner's land?
No, a right of way, when it's abandoned, half goes to each of-
No, I'm not talking about abandoning it, I'm, before the flood, did we own Daley Avenue?
So ownership versus right of way.
Yeah, yeah. Or was it just a right of way over a landowner's land, because there's a huge difference in my mind.
And to me, my guess, this is strictly a guess, is that if it's-
I don't want to guess.
I agree. My, my, my guess is, is an easement is over somebody else's land, and I think that, that, uh, the definition that Tom's on of a right of way is just an overlay of designation on city land.
But I, but I want that, I want that answer, and I want-
You're, you're right, I should have just shut my mouth, you are absolutely correct. Other, other comments from the table? All right, so let's do a roll call vote on the motion to table to March?
May.
May?
Fourteenth.
I know I wrote that down.
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth. Um, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Eve?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Toobin?
Yes.
All right, the motion to table passes, we will have this on the agenda for May fourteenth. Um, I will, um, compile the questions and bring the expert testimony to that. Um, thank you all for, for your patience on the fifth Tuesday, thank you all, uh, in the community for coming and, and voicing, uh, your opinions and being part of the local government process. Um, going back to, I have a regular agenda here.
Oh, you have public comments, so to go-
Yeah, let's, uh, go ahead, at this time we'll open for public comment on any public matter, not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak. Go ahead and open public comment. Nothing in the room, online? Going twice? Going three times, we'll close public comment. Um, would you like to help me with agenda item number nine?
I move to adjourn, just a minute.
I second.
All right, thank you all.
Cut out of here by, before eight o'clock?
Pardon?
Cut out of here before eight o'clock?
Yeah, I, I agree by not having the-